2017 Alexander County Board of Education meeting to order and I would like to recognize Vice Chair Scott Bowman for our invocation.
Please pray with him. Father, thank you so much for the day you've given us and we'll just thank you for the many blessings you give us every day. Will just help us this week and help the schools as we try to get back to school tomorrow and just keep everyone safe. Put the heads around all our buses and everyone traveling. Just help us all to get there safely and help all the teachers and help our students. So just keep your hand on them every day. And we just thank you so much for everything you do for our county and our schools and for all of our teachers and staff. And just help our kids every day. Thank you for everything you do for us in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, I would like to recognize some students from Ellendale. I have Lauren Eckard. She's the daughter of Chris and Kim Eckard. She's a fourth grader at Ellendale and I'd also like to, excuse me, to recognize Drew Chapman. He's the son of Eric and April Chapman and he's a fifth grader and they're going to lead us in the pledge.
Attention, so let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Okay, board members, you've had a chance to look over the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to approve.
Sir, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hefner for our honors and recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As always, it's my pleasure to present the honors and recognition portion of the board meeting. Tonight, we honor our school board members for their service to our schools and community. These people contribute their time and talents toward the advancement of public education in Alexander County. They are dedicated to the continued success of our students, employees, and Alexander County as a whole. Our school board is one of more than 100 such boards across the state that with the advice and counsel of the educational professionals they hire has an impact on virtually every aspect of our schools. This is a huge responsibility and one that should not be taken lightly. Our Board of Education members represent our communities and take their responsibilities seriously by attending meetings and conferences, visiting our schools, and keeping a close connection to the students, staff, and parents of the communities they represent. January is School Board Appreciation Month and on behalf of all the students and staff of this school system, I would like to say thank you for your leadership and dedication to this public school system. Tonight, members of the system's leadership team will be presenting each of you with a movie night themed basket. The theme used for this basket is for the enjoyment of your entire family as I know firsthand how much time you spend away from them attending to school system matters. Enjoy this basket and know that each of you are truly an asset to me and to the system's students and employees. We'll start with the first presentation going to our board chair, Karen Bricksy. If you'll come forward, please. And of course, we have to get a picture. So, Madam Chair, lead the way. We will. We'll do it as a group. We'll do each presentation separately. Vice Chair Scott Bowman. Board member Sally Hardis. David Odom is sick tonight, but we'll get his basket to him. Marty Pennell, will you please come forward? This one, Marty. Bridget Ryan, please come forward. And last, but certainly not least, Harry Schrum, please come forward.
And this is not on my script, but I want you all to know that in your box of popcorn, and yes, sharing the happy, then put these little pieces of popcorn. If you pull that up, there is a Walmart card in there that says thank you and you and your family can decide the movie that you buy with your Walmart card. There is also a pizza coupon and all kinds of other goodies that can be used on a movie night. Give this group a round of applause.
I did not say certainly least. And a round of applause to Deborah, the getter of things. She's the one who did the shopping for all the goodies. Board members, as you make your way back to your seats, you will find an assortment of other goodies. The red bag is on behalf of the West Alexander Bulldogs and their faculty. And then, I think you have cards and other gifts and our school system employees just want to say thank you.
Wonder Woman. Thank you all very much. Give a little strength running a meeting where we're honoring what we do. I think that we all do it because it means a lot to us and we take it very seriously. So, thank you for that. Do we have anyone signed up for? No public comment. Okay. Board members, you had a chance to look at the, well, first, I'm going to say if there's anybody that wants to sneak out before we start the business portion of the meeting, you're welcome to or you're welcome to stay here and see some of the presentations. Board members, you've had a chance to look over the consent agenda that was included in your packet. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Someone.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor of approving that, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, we're moving on to reports and I would recognize Alexander Central High School Principal Doug Roney for a presentation to us on the freshman academy.
Well, I do not come bearing gifts, but we do come bearing information as that's getting loaded up. Bree Williams is going to pass out the PowerPoint for you. Obviously, I have two very good trustees, Bree, and then obviously Peyton Bowles with me here, Boils. She gets on me all the time. I'll get started with this. As you look through, this conversation didn't start yesterday about a freshman academy. This conversation actually started about six years ago. There's been a lot of things that have gone on at the high school, a lot of transitions, a lot of things that timing is everything. The one-to-one took several years to get that in place. There's just been a lot of things, the addition of all the curriculum and all the classes that we add, the AP courses that we've added over the course of the years, the cohort, the agreements and everything we do with CBCC. It seems like every year, there's something new, something different that we have done. But it's for the benefit of the students and it has done nothing but made us a better, stronger, more productive high school in the things that we've done. So, we feel like the next step is our freshman academy. Over the course of the last several years, we have looked at graduation rate, why are we where we're at? Why are we stuck? Where are we where we're at? And it's a group of students that we've got to make some transitions for and help them through high school. And so, that's kind of what the academy is going to be about in that regards. Bree and Peyton are going to talk about some things. We've got some slides that we want to talk to you about. I really don't want to give too much information right now because it's going to jump into what they're going to talk about. But then I do want to entertain any questions when we finish up because I know as this starts, you're going to get questioned a lot. What is the freshman academy? What's it about? What's your thoughts? And so, we've got to do a good job as far as PR and tonight's the first part of that is sharing that information with you. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bree and let her take off.
So, why create one? Like, what's the purpose in a freshman academy? And ninth graders are known to struggle. I mean, it's a well-known pretty much fact across the board, across the state. The ninth graders have the highest rate of absences, failures, retention, discipline issues of any other class within a school. And so, those efforts to help target freshmen are very important. Research shows that between 70 to 80% of students who fail the first year of high school will not graduate from high school. And so, that's another reason to target freshmen, to try to make that the most successful year as possible. Oh, back up. By the way, I'm Bree Williams. I didn't introduce myself. I've worked at the high school for 12 years. I've worked with ninth graders pretty much primarily the entire time. Health education and high school success are primarily the two jobs, are the two things that I focused on in the classroom. And then I also have a degree in school counseling and I've worked part-time in counseling for about four years now, primarily at the alternative school. And so, I'm also accustomed to working with at-risk kids. Do you want to introduce yourself or wait till you get up here? Okay. So, back to my slide. A freshman academy can help make a bigger school into a smaller environment and that's another reason. Like, we've heard a lot about ninth graders, parents are concerned, you know, the kids are very concerned about going to a larger school and this is a way to kind of help make a larger school a little bit smaller. And we're not planning on separating as we'll talk about in a little bit. We're not planning on alienating them by any means at all. But we just want to kind of try to make the environment at least a little more personalized, smaller for them to ease the transition. And, you know, they're intimidated when they come into high school. They have longer classes, you know, they've got smart lunch, they've got more responsibilities, and it is a scary thing. So, we see this as something to help their transition.
The other reasons for the freshman academy is obviously, and you've heard a lot about the MTSS process that we're all going through and through a lot of work from the central office, I feel like Alexander Central is way ahead of the curve right now. We have visited a lot of places, been a lot of places and done a lot of things. And when you visit, if you ask them what MTSS stands for, what it's about, we've heard it, but we don't have a clue what it's about. A lot of folks are doing it, but they don't realize where they're doing it and how they're doing it. But basically, what this is going to allow us to do is to target some of our at-risk kids that we've got in our building. We're 86, 87% graduation rate. We're not going anywhere else until something else happens. We're stuck in that. So, a freshman academy, you're not going to see immediate results. You're going to see results four years down the road when that group gets to that point. The bullets that you see, excuse me, students who miss 10% or more of their days are at risk of not graduating or getting credit for a class. And so, those are kids that we target already for tier-two interventions. We meet every Monday in my office at 1:45. And the overwhelming, overwhelming reason that those kids are on that group or that list is basically because of attendance. You could put attendance policies in place and all those things that they've got a little bit of teeth to them. But again, there's no, there's no ramification. There's no mom and daddy that's pushing, making them come to school. So, within the freshman academy, you've got a counselor and you've got a director, you've got a core group of teachers that know when that student's not there and they're immediately picking up that phone or Bree's picking up that phone and making those contacts, finding out where they're at or going and making a lot of house calls. Students with two or more discipline referrals have an increased likelihood of dropping out or obviously receiving tier-two interventions. And so, again, a big piece of this is going to put or going to address behaviors of our ninth graders when we come. Again, if you look at our discipline as a whole, as a school, where does the majority of the discipline come from? It is our ninth graders because, again, it's a new environment. It's overwhelming. You've got 17 and 18-year-olds that are influencing you to do things that you shouldn't do. And oftentimes, we refer to them as rats on crack. They're just running around wild and they don't know what to do because they don't, can't handle that environment and that stimulus that they've got. And so, we can control that within that academy. Students failing two or more classes at any given time during that freshman year, the likelihood of them passing or graduating is astronomical as well. You know, we call them freshmoors sometimes. These are our 16, 17-year-olds that just do not get out of that freshman year. They just struggle and they struggle and they struggle. You put interventions in place and what do you get? You're still that freshman at 16 years old. What happens? We lose them and they never show back up. So, we've got some statistics that will show you at that point.
Okay, so we got with Cindy to kind of get some retentions for us. And we had a different slide when we presented this to our school about how many students in each year for the last four years have dropped out. But if you can see, over the past four years, approximately 23% of incoming ninth graders were considered at risk for dropping out. I know it seems like we're kind of focusing on those students that are at risk and that's not necessarily the intention because ninth grade is more than just those students at risk. But looking at these statistics just helps you see that, or at least, let me just put it like this. When I was on board with this, I could not believe those numbers that I saw that there were 27 students dropping out of not, I mean, or retentions for ninth grade, not dropping out, but they were at risk. And then 31 in the following year, 27 in the following year, and then even with the new grading scale, there were 16 kids that were still retentions for ninth grade. And I teach the majority of these kids. I'm a math one teacher. I'm also math two and I have precalculus this semester. But primarily, the students that I teach are ninth graders. And so, I have a lot of students that maybe didn't make it their freshman year and I have them again as sophomores. So, I see a lot of these students and, I mean, it is, it is a pretty big statistic for those ninth graders to be retained that long, so.
As for dropouts, those same four years, it looks like 13 have been our magic number for about three years. From 2012 through 2015, we had 13 ninth graders drop out each year. And then, another thing as we talked about earlier, last year when we got the new grading scale, we thought that, you know, that's probably going to really help students. Well, we had even more students drop out last year and we had 17 drop out. As of today, we've had six ninth graders drop this year so far.
Well, when we were looking at doing the freshman academy and Mr. Roney kind of presented it to us, wanted to know what were some foundational reasons behind it? Kind of like what Bree said, it does create a more personalized learning environment. It's not a school within a school, which kind of seems like it might be that, but with that smaller setting, with those groups of teachers working with those kids in a relatively same location, you can track those kids better. Whether they are kids that are at risk or whether they are kids that are your honors level that want to keep going, you're still being able to provide opportunities for both ends of the spectrum and all in between. So, you get to build those relationships and you get to have that rigor with them. Probably one of the biggest things is teachers collaborate to meet student needs. We do that already, but I would not say that we do that amongst different departments. Like, the math department, we discuss our students and the science department. But having the opportunity to work with your son and another science teacher and an English teacher and all be in the same room together and have common planning to do that, to discuss our kids, is going to be huge for us. Another thing is to decrease dropout rate. I know we've just talked about that. But the dropout rate for ninth-grade academies was 6.6% compared to a state average of 12.5%. So, I mean, nearly half. And then, obviously, increased attendance and promotion rates is exactly like what Mr. Roney said. I can tell you the number of, if I compare my freshman class to my precalculus class and I look at absences, it is tremendous, the number of absences that freshmen have versus upper-level students, so.
And so, research supports that a ninth-grade academy, it will and can help. So, how's this good for all students? And it's like I kind of introduced earlier, it eases the transition to a new school environment. It makes schools more personalized as Peyton and I have both talked about. It decreases the likelihood, statistics show, or the data shows that, you know, it decreases the likelihood that a kid's going to fall through the cracks because you've got so many people meeting and discussing and we talk about the student on a regular basis. And it also helps prepare them for the next level of education within high school and beyond because it's going to help them, prepare them for the 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade courses and then possibly even some career courses as well. We visited, part of the research that we've done is we've visited two high schools to see, like, firsthand what they were doing with their academies. And we visited King's Mountain High and they've had an academy from 2008 up until the present time. And Peyton will share with you some of the data that we found from King's Mountain.
So, we were really thankful that we went there. We learned probably the absolute most from going to that high school about their freshman academy. They got it going on. If anybody wants to go see, or let me just say from our perspective, they were, they were on point with what they were doing. Their pass into, I think they started in 2008, right? And so, the ninth graders passing all of their courses was less than 70%. And now, currently, they have between, what, 86 and 92% passing all of their courses. Again, you can look at their discipline referrals, which, and in 2008 when they, or right when they started, was around multiple discipline referrals was 40%. And then, currently, their ninth graders with multiple discipline referrals is as low as 16%. Probably the biggest thing that might stand out to you and stood out to us is their graduation rate, where they went from 72% to 92% in eight years. And that's a pretty, that's a pretty big jump for graduation rate. So, they, we learned a lot from just going to King's Mountain, that particular school. We learned a lot from going to the other school we went to as well, but King's Mountain was a good first school to go.
One of the things that we also found at King's Mountain High is that they were, they grouped their academy teachers into learning communities where they had one of the core teachers, math, science, English, social studies. And they met on a weekly basis to discuss students and discuss, you know, things about the academy. They also had a dedicated director and a counselor who, that was their job. Like, they were dedicated to work in the academy, dedicated to go to these meetings, make these contacts. And they worked solely with these ninth graders, at least for the most part, and the teachers and were in regular conversations with their parents. Yeah, and that covered that last bullet, too. Our other visit was to Central Cabarrus High School. We didn't really do a slide on Central Cabarrus. But what we mainly found from Central Cabarrus High School was that they had been doing some of the things that King's Mountain High School was doing, but because of some of their, their changes, like their population had grown so much. I mean, their school had just exploded in size. They weren't able to do some of the groupings and the teaming with teachers. And they wish that they had still been doing that because they found that effective originally. They did have a dedicated director. They did not have a counselor and they really wished that they did have a counselor solely for working with just with the ninth graders. Do you remember anything else that we found?
They didn't have the opportunities, it seems like, that we have, like, they didn't have smart lunch, which we love for the kids being able to come. For a teacher, I will say, I don't know how anybody else feels about it. But for a teacher, I love it because I can yank my kids in my room. I mean, if I need to and not have to say, are you going to stay after school? Because they had no choice at that point. So, they didn't have that and wish they did. That was something. I think there was just some inconsistency with maybe within their academy that things just kind of were falling apart. I think that initially started out like King's Mountain for the most part. But, I mean, their director that met with us was very honest and said, you know, if y'all are going this route, you need to make sure you have these things in place because we have not had that anymore and ours is not as successful. So, we learned a lot. We learned a lot from King's Mountain, but we kind of learned some things that if we, if we get slack on things, then this is what's going to happen. So, I would say we learned a lot from Central Cabarrus as well.
So, what are we planning on doing? We are planning on housing our core classes in the Upper Sea Building, which is the back building of the high school where currently the English hall is. We're planning on having the ninth-grade academy located in that hallway. We'll have math, science, English, and social studies primarily for ninth graders. But there will also be some other grade levels visiting up there, too, because our teachers, they will still have the opportunity. For example, we have an English teacher who's planning on working in the academy. Well, she also does yearbook. So, her yearbook class and her yearbook students will be coming up on that hallway as well. We're going to house them in that area so we can help with communication among the teachers and the students, monitor the progress, their behavior, conduct maybe freshman academy-specific activities, things like that. We plan, yes, go ahead.
Before you go on, it's just kind of important to note, y'all probably know this, especially if you've had kids that go through the high school, just because that whole hallway is going to be housed, those students will only be there maybe two periods a day because they still have their smart lunch that they'll go out with the rest of the school and their elective courses. It's not like they're going to be on that hall for periods a day and not integrated into the school. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and we found in the research that that's not effective. Like, having that, that, keeping them like physically away from all the other grades is not an effective way to help transition them. Because it's, they don't, they need to be integrated, but maybe like a smaller transition. And so, we are going to allow them to take their elective courses out in the building and then they're going to stay in their normal places and PE and art and CTE courses. I mean, their opportunities are going to be exactly the same. We do plan on having teacher, weekly teacher and weekly student meetings regularly. We will, we do plan on having a dedicated director to the academy and a dedicated counselor. And what we both will do is work with primarily the ninth-grade students, opportunities, interventions for student success, monitoring the grades, the behavior, you know, assisting parents in any way that we can, regular contact with them, any activities, like I said. We're going to target all students at all achievement level. It's not just going to be focusing on the kids who are at risk. We'll look at kids at every achievement, achievement level, level, excuse me. And they still have the same opportunities, you know, there's still the same AP courses, still the same honors courses. They can still double up on math and science. Like, academically, this is not going to change for students at all. It's not. It's really behind the scenes changing more than anything because the teachers are going to be able to communicate with one another and like track kids and progress and plan special things.
That will be the single biggest thing that parents are going to ask you and reassure them that they're going to have the same opportunities. The AP Earth and Environmental is a ninth grader, the math two and the math three for those students that are, want that rigor. So, they're going to have those same opportunities and we've just got to beat that home and make sure parents do understand that that we're going to give kids that opportunity.
So, how are we planning to communicate this? Well, this is our first showdown, so here we go. But during the eighth-grade parent night at the high school on February 7th, sending things in the mail, putting things in the newspaper, putting things in our website, social media. Back-to-school bash in August before school begins. We'll also have professional development and training for all teachers, but especially those involved, working with the ninth grade. But also for the teachers that are not part of the ninth grade because they're going to be getting these students the next year. So, they need to be just as involved as we are. And then, probably is going to be the biggest thing, we were talking with Dr. Curry today, about creating a webpage with information and frequently asked questions. Because like Mr. Roney said, there's going to be a lot of, I mean, this is new and this is skeptical and there's going to be a lot of questions. So, that's probably going to be one of the biggest things that will be helpful for just us getting information and correcting any miscommunication or things like that that might come about.
All right. Questions for the group? And I want to thank Bree and Peyton for their hard work. Anybody that is smart in leadership, just find good people, put in the work and get out of their way and let them do it. And these are two fantastic people, along with Ms. Gant and the group that we take into our business that we've had. We've had a number of folks, seven, eight people that have gone with those visits and trips. It's been very valuable. And then coming back and making presentations to the staff. Of course, there was skepticism amongst the staff. And so, to be able to sell them and to share those ideas. And I know Dr. Hefner was involved in one of those meetings and we're 100% on board now, so. and I know Dr. Hector was involved in one of those meetings, and we're 100% on board now, so.
The biggest misconception, I think, that I am already hearing is that a freshman academy is only beneficial to at-risk students, and that's not true. You saw some data tonight about some of our at-risk students. And of course, they will be targeted, because at-risk children are typically the ones who drop out of school. But a freshman academy is beneficial to all students. And so, at the meeting that I attended with staff, a little bit of that was voiced that day from staff. And that's what we need to get out ahead of, to make sure that parents, the community, and even the teachers at the high school understand that this benefits all children, not just at-risk children.
Well, it's such a transition to go from, even from elementary to middle, and then middle to high. And I think your students are going to enjoy it, feel just a little bit safe. You know, they've got a little bit of safety net here, but they can still go out and do things at the high school.
All of you, yeah, all of you sitting on this board has had students that have come through that high school and made that transition. And that's a difficult transition, and it doesn't matter if there's an honor student or that at-risk student. It's just, and I think, once parents give it that opportunity, then they're going to appreciate that extra little help that we're going to give their son or daughter to be, have a great high school career.
I'm excited about it. I have a ninth grader next year, so.
Yes, you do.
Test it out.
Well, it's like the jump start that they do at the middle schools. That makes the incoming sixth graders feel so much more comfortable when they come into that school. And I can see this making all ninth graders feel more comfortable.
But you know what they deal with as ninth graders. Those hormones are starting to raise, their bodies are changing, there's so many other influences out there. And it's a tough, difficult time in their life. And to help them and guide them in directions is going to be exciting.
We're looking forward to it. You're starting in the fall.
Yes, ma'am. Ambitious. We're good, though.
Hey, y'all can do it, if anybody can.
And to, to squelch any concerns as far as extra staffing, I'm assuming that the director and counselor, those are just transitioning to that.
Yes, sir. Bree, Bree is who we've designated as our director. We're going to take one of our counselors from one of the four, and we'll house them out there as well. So, it'll be three that will remain in the counseling center and take care of 10th, 11th, 12th grade. They'll continue to divide up the alphabet. They always have A through, they'll, they'll re-divide, obviously, because they're losing a person. But that individual will be responsible for the 300 individuals that will be out in freshman academy. Absolutely. No additional staff whatsoever.
One comment. I know in the years past, we've, we've seen the, where the ninth graders have had a hard transition in the smart lunch. I think the, I think this would be the great.
One thing, one thing we left off, and Laurie, I'm glad you brought it up, i- is that we learned when we were at King's Mountain, they do a Mountie Monday, every Monday, for a homeroom during, during their smart lunch. And, and the reason, and they've shared what they do every day during that time. We take a lot for granted that kids pick up, what does ACT stand for? What does SAT stand for? How do you sign up for the SAT or the ACT? How do you check your email? How do you do all of these things? And so, we're going to take every Monday, if that's the day we designate, every Monday, and there's going to be a lesson, 30-minute lesson, that's going to be designated to how to become a successful high school student. And it's going to be how to send an email, how to write an email, how to answer an email, all of those things, how to check your power school, you know, look at scheduling. So, it's going to help a lot of things. What are all the acronyms that we throw at kids that we just never have opportunities to do and explain? When do you need to take the ACT or the SAT? All of those things to make kids be more successful in high school. That was one of the things that I took back, too, that was just, that we're missing the, we're missing the boat in that regard for our kids.
One more question.
Yes.
One of the statistics in there, with the new grading scale intact, you felt like it would help out the dropout rate. What, do you have any insight on why that increased?
That could have been some kids, and we've talked about that a little bit, that could have been kids that hung around, that had been freshmen for two or three years, and finally got to the point where, phew, I'm done, and they walked out the door with that. So, you know, that could be why it's elevated at that time. We all felt like, you know, now, not retentions, but the number of failures went down because of their 10-point grading scale. And so, we'll see again, obviously, here in another week or two, to see if that's comparable to what we have seen last year this time as well.
And we had less retained that year, it's just more dropped out for some reason. So, like you said, maybe the leftover repeaters.
I have a question about King's Mountain. The graduation rates went up from 72 to 92% in eight years. I know you can't prove causation there, but what did they think? Did they think the freshman academy had a huge impact on that?
100%.
Yeah, they think so.
Yep. Math 1, here's a great statistic they shared with us. Math 1 drives your schedule, or not Math 1, excuse me, Math drives your schedule. Math 1 is a very difficult course, as Crystal shared, knows, and Brian knows, sitting in the audience, to get kids through. And so, what King's Mountain was experiencing was 20 and 30. Right now, we have about 40 kids each year, and sometimes maybe even more. 60, sorry, that do not pass Math 1. What do they do? They've got to go right back in there. King's Mountain was experiencing the same thing. This year's group of 16, 17 had four repeating Math 1 students in there, and that's all. And their numbers and their, the size of their school is very comparable to that. So, that's proof that they are not going to allow those kids to fail a class. And so, that, that was proof when we were there. That was a huge statistic that they shared with us.
So, that's a huge jump.
Oh, it is.
72 to 92%.
Well, and even in those four years, you saw where they jumped that 7%. Then over the course of the next several years, then they made great strides. And I think it took time to get their feet under them, so to speak, and we will as well, take time. You're going, we're going, we're going to do some things, and at the end of the year, go, why, you know, why? You know, that was not, and you'll revamp, and you'll retool, and you'll make it better every year.
But one of their biggest, they said, for King's Mountain, their greatest success came from having the same director. That that, that position is not a stepping stone for somebody that wants to go into administrative position or something, you know, of a higher suit, that that, that director is somebody that, that's what they want to do. Those are the kids they want to work with, that, that is their job. And that was what they had, and they had the same director that had been there since 2008 when they started. And she, she was on it. I mean, and that, you could tell that the kids, just being there for the short amount of time, that the kids, they knew she meant business. I mean, no matter whether they were, you could tell, you know, no matter what classroom she walked in, those kids knew her, and she knew every one of those students. Oh, sorry. I feel like I'm wild enough. So, but anyway, that was something, and we give Bree a hard time about, she doesn't want to be a principal. So, seems like it will be a good fit.
I think we're excited. Hope to hear back from you next year.
Absolutely. Well, when, when I present in June, obviously, we'll have a lot more information about it, and hopefully we'll have schedules and read it roll.
And you can report, too, on some PD that we've.
Absolutely, yes.
To prepare everybody for this transition.
Absolutely. All right. Crystal, we love you, but I'm going to step out, so, all right.
Great. I'm going to recognize Crystal Hope. She is the principal at Ellendale Elementary, and we have a nice face.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to be here tonight to do an update on Ellendale. I decided this year, because you've heard a little bit about Leader and Me, that I can tell you about it, but I have some student leaders that I would like to tell you a little bit about it. And our presentation just goes along with our school motto. And I'll tell you, I sat with these students on Friday afternoon, some longer than others, right? And I had this outline, and we started brainstorming some of the ideas. And they sat and wrote what you're going to hear. It's not something that I've created or their teachers created. So, I think that's really important. I know the first one that finished was Ms. Larian, and she stood up there. My jaw dropped, because she wrote it better than what I would have. So, I guess, can I take this off for them?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Dr. Griffin, where do they need to stand for the videotape? Okay.
Right there, that good?
Hello, my name is Larian Eckard, and I'm in Mrs. Sprinkles 4th grade. Tonight, I'm going to tell you how Ellendale Elementary has improved on learning about leadership. Our school motto is learn, lead, serve, succeed. Our presentation will show you how we carry out that motto at Ellendale. Some of the ways we have done this is each student got a Seven Habits workbook at the beginning of the school year. I like using this to learn about the habits. Another thing we have learned is hand signals for each of the habits. Every class also made a mission statement and made a video for each one. Here's a short clip.
This is Mrs. Sprinkles 4th grade class, and we're on the hunt for some leaders. Let's see what we can find.
It's our class. We have good attitudes, we have goals. We have open minds and good hearts. Learning as a team. We will make good choices. We will help each other. Everyone works together. Everybody is positive, ready to lead and succeed. We can work hard, we will never give up. Achieving our goals. Always do our best. We have courage. All of us are caring and compassionate. We will be respectful and responsible. And we're wearing new things. We are hard workers. We are leaders. We will be leaders. We will be leaders. And be great leaders. What are we? Leaders. Who are we? Tiger leaders. How will we lead? To succeed.
Also, we have lead time in the class, and we learn about the seven habits. We also have data notebooks that we write our goals in. Over the summer this year, staff completed Level 1 training, and all staff had three, four days of training so far. Group one went to symposium last year in South Carolina, and another group is going in February for the seven habits. Staff also has coaching sessions throughout the year. My favorite habit is probably put first things first, because it helps me remember to work first, then play. Now, I'm going to tell you how some of the habits helped me in real life. I am proactive when I don't blame others for my actions. I also begin with the end in mind when I set goals and achieve them. I sharpen the saw by playing with friends and find my voice by being myself. Also, I seek first to understand, then to be understood by listening before I speak, and synergize by working well with others. I hope you enjoyed and learned something about Ellendale.
Hello, my name is Caleb. I'm in the 4th grade at Ellendale Elementary School. At Ellendale Elementary School, we have leadership roles, like putting up and taking down the flags. There are also readers, safety patrols, student counselor, and PE assistants. Some other leadership roles we have are doing the announcements and media helpers. In class, we have classroom jobs. The jobs are cleaning and making the classroom needed, like desk washers, lawn leaders, lunchroom helpers, plant water, office assistants, clip-up manager, messenger, and computer checks. We have clip charts in class, so if we do something bad, we clip down and write it in our planners. We also clip up when we are good. The seven habits teach us how to be a leader. The seven habits are be proactive, begin with the end in mind, put first things first, think when when, seek first to understand, then to be understood, synergize, and sharpen the saw. The Lighthouse Team is a team of teachers that help with Leader and Me. All teachers are also on an action team. These are committees that do things for the school. The action teams are the environmental team, the events team, the family and community engagement team, the professional and personal learning team, the Leader and Me content and curriculum team. The quote, a quote I like is, "Leadership is doing what is right when no one is watching." I hope you learned something about being a leader.
Hello, my name is Drew Chapman. I am a 5th grade student at Ellendale. At Ellendale, we are leaders. We like to do projects to help our community. I am going to tell you about many of our projects. Our school sponsored Freshwater Elementary in Louisiana. We raised money so that they can buy books and supplies after their school was ruined by a flood. Our school also sponsored a veterans program. We recognized each veteran and what war they were in. We honored them by shaking their hands and thanking them for their service. We had a program that day, some of the kids during the program sang songs, read poems that they had wrote, and read a story that some of them had wrote. One of our students at Ellendale did a toy drive for Levine Children's Hospital. Our school helped him by bringing toys in for the toy drive. The 4th grade classes sponsored a school-wide firefighter collection. They got supplies together and sent them to the firefighters that were fighting the wildfires. Some of these items are foot powder, thick foot socks, baby wipes, plastic forks, and spoons. Our student council held an ice cream party for the law enforcement. We provided ice cream and toppings for them. Also, we gave them goody bags with candies in it. Every year, we sponsor an angel tree at Christmas. This year, we helped 70 children and 31 families. Students that wanted to sponsor a child got an angel that they would get a list of items for. My brother and I sponsored two kids, one boy and one girl. We got them winter jackets, pajamas, one big toy each, and shirts and pants. The 31 families were also given a food box with a ham and many canned foods, such as box of instant potatoes, box of macaroni cheese, corn, and green beans for supper, and also pancakes, cereal, oatmeal, and pop tarts for breakfast over the holidays. Our student council here at Ellendale did a job for the Ellendale Ruettens. We went to the Ruettens building and cleaned it for an event that they were having. We also partnered with the Ruettens as they cooked chicken plates, and we sold tickets to raise money for our Leader and Me program. For the Christian Crisis Center canned food drive, we bought in 12,027 items, and we came in second place. A group of students raised money themselves to give to the Rotary for the Backpack Program. Our school does many activities to raise money for Relay for Life. We hold a Christmas store, Mother's Day store, spray hair, and have a fun day to Relay for Life. Right now, we are doing Jump Rope for Heart. Last year, we raised over $5,000. Each year in PE for Jump Rope for Heart, we have three different clubs. We have the Juggle Bug Club, the Hula Hoop Club, the Jump Rope Club. If we get in all three clubs, we get recognized as a Jump Rope for Heart leader. One of my favorite verses is Philippians 4:13, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." As a Christian, we are taught to help others, which we are learning and practicing at Ellendale. I think service is very important to help, to help better our community.
So, the students have talked about the first three parts, and I thank you guys and parents for bringing them out, even though we weren't in school today and we haven't been able to practice very much. But we've gone through learn and lead, and so I'll do succeed, serve, and I'll do succeed. So, some of our goals we have had at Ellendale, we have not received PBIS recognition in several years. And so, we were proud to get that recognition this year. And some of the things that I attribute to that are, we have come up with school-wide criteria, and students are recognized in a leader fest. We also, you heard them talk about data notebooks, and so they use those to track their data, both academic, behavioral, and personal. And so, we do data reviews. And so we do data reviews as a class, but also as a staff in looking at discipline and such. And then, of course, the students who are not maybe succeeding, as well as these student leaders, we have individual plans for. Another thing that we're proud of is our proficiency on our student achievement. We were able to increase our overall achievement by one point last year. Our science increased four points, math, two points. We did go down one point in reading, but we were at the highest in the county for overall math and reading. So we are really proud of those proficiencies. Now, growth is something that we are very aware of, and that's one of our goals. And the Teaching Working Conditions Survey, that is something we have talked about in our leadership team. It was, I guess, with me being fairly new there, that was one thing that I went in looking at. And so I'm proud to say that we've made gains in teacher leadership and school leadership. Things like the atmosphere and trust and respect went from seventy-five to ninety-two. Teachers feel comfortable raising issues went from forty to eighty. I'm not happy with eighty, but we're there. We're going to keep working on it. Teachers have influence on decision-making went from sixty-one to eighty. And then just a group process for solving problems, and that increased from seventy-one to a hundred percent. So those are some things that we are proud of. Now, we still have some goals to work on. And so part of succeeding, I feel like we need to talk about what are some of our focus areas, and of course, that student growth. And at Ellendale, about three years ago, we had some pretty hard discussions, and we were trending positive, even though still in the negative. And last year, we went on a dive backwards. And so that was hard. It was hard for me. It was hard for staff. So we have really had to dig in. Even though our proficiency is high, we are not making growth with all of our groups of students. So we really dug in, looking at data even further with Data Days. We were able to use our Title I funds to hire two part-time TAs. So I really think that small group help is going to give us some help as well. We've done some PD and really looked at our scheduling for our upper grades, doing more. For example, our fifth grade is in ninety-minute classes. I don't know if they know that was because of me or not, but they are switching in ninety-minute blocks just to have more focused time. Fourth grade is also, we redid their schedule, so they have more focused whole group time rather than in a small group for their remediation or books on their level. So we've done a little bit, or a lot actually, on that student growth because we've got to get there. Our proficiency, our teachers are working too hard, so we've got to narrow in to get to that growth. And that's been a thorn in all of our side, so hopefully we'll get better. And then, even though we had some good things going on with our teacher working conditions, climate, culture, and leadership, you heard the kids talk about the Lighthouse Team and our action teams, and we really have reorganized into that. But we need to continue to come together as a staff and with our students and build more leadership opportunities. We've done a school-wide lead time that you heard them talk about. We've got coaching going on. We have scheduled the second part of our Training Leader and Me, which is actually aligning academics. And we're going to be talking about things like pigs and wigs, which wigs are wildly important goals, and pigs are pretty important goals. So we're going to get even more, I guess, clear and consistent from school level down to grade level, down to classroom, down to students. And that's actually what will go in their data notebooks coming up next year. And then MTSS and PLCs, that continues to be a huge focus for us. As the district has moved into that model, we are still talking about our tiered and what our interventions are and what we're doing with those students. And I know Ellendale has, sorry, the best teachers, and so we've got to work smarter in our PLCs and collaboration to get to those, using our interventions and our resources wisely. And I guess this quote kind of sums it up, and we're very proud to show off the other banner we received, which is that we are a leader and me school, not a lighthouse school, that's the top, but we are proud of that banner. But I like this quote, "Coming together is the beginning," and I feel like we have done that. "Keeping together is progress, and working together is success." And so we're doing some good things, and we've got plenty to continue to work on. So that's just kind of an overview of our motto. Any questions from the board, comments?
Very impressive presentations from your leaders there. Think you could go take that, what you learned, and take it over to high school. Because you're learning very valuable, valuable skills, and you may not know it really. You might think you get it right now, but someday what you're learning is going to be, is going to help you succeed and be even better leaders as you become adults.
Just talking in front of the group.
Sure.
Which one of them wanted to talk longer and picked the most to talk about. You're not surprised, are you, Eric?
I want to thank you for coming on a day when you didn't have school and your parents and families for bringing you. It really is great to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spoke. I recognize Dr. Betsy Curry, Associate Superintendent for a Curriculum Update.
Chairman Betsy, members of the board, superintendent. Can you all hear me back there? I'm going to try to stay right in front of the microphone. I have for you this evening a curriculum update. It's been a while since I've provided an update, so I want to briefly talk about where we have been and where we're going. We have spent the last three years revising curriculum documents and really digging into the standards. When I first came back to Alexander County, one of Dr. Heffner's charges for me was to really dig into the data, go visit schools, and try to get a sense of where we were. And I felt like our most immediate concern was math. And so we started working on that, developed curriculum documents the next year in ELA in social studies, and then the next year in ELA in science because we integrated those maps. So that's kind of where we've been. We've seen some tremendous gains with some of the curriculum work that we've done and some of the instructional work that we've done, but we're really ready to move on and dig in into instructional practices. Does this work, Bill? Okay. This is, you really don't want to read this. You might want to read this when you can decipher it. But I really wanted to talk to you about what a meta-analysis is. And briefly speaking, there is tons of research that is done in the field of education, thousands upon thousands upon thousands of studies. And people can read eight or ten studies on an instructional strategy, and they can come up with a narrative about what they think might be working. But there's a statistical formula that takes these hundreds of studies and brings them all into practice to tell you what an effect is of a particular instructional focus. So if you'll go to the next slide. Next one. These are three major fields of research in the field of education. We have classroom instruction that works, and that's actually the volume two, but some of you have probably heard of Marzano. And we also have the most recent meta-analysis work, which is done by John Hattie, and that's Visible Learning. And then we have the Learning Focused Instructional Framework, which is also based on meta-analyses. And so what we're doing is we're looking at all these bodies of research, and we're looking at what we call high-yield instructional strategies. And Marzano started out saying that there are nine high-yield instructional strategies. These are the ones that if you do these, you're going to get the most bang for your buck. So we've looked at these three different research studies and tried to combine and figure out what are the best strategies that we can do to really help our kids to achieve, as well as kids all over the nation. Go ahead, Bill. Thank you. This is a summary of it, and this is just John Hattie's work. And I thought his was the most probably easy to understand. But John Hattie looked at one hundred and thirty-eight influences on student achievement. So that might be direct instruction, cooperative learning, all those things that you hear about, those buzzwords. And he looked one hundred and thirty-eight instructional strategies. And then he put the results of thousands of research studies over all the different countries, all the different demographic groups all together, and he came up with an effect. And we've also looked at Marzano and Solution Tree, remember. So an effect size of 1.0 is approximately three years' worth of growth for students. So we want to look at things that are in that range because we want all of our children to succeed at high levels. What we also have are effect sizes of about 0.44 is about a year's growth. So we don't ever want to be doing something that's below 0.44 because if that's a practice of ours, then we're going to lose ground. And we want to be looking at those high-yield instructional strategies. And the effect sizes go anywhere from minus 3.0 to up as high as 0.7 to 1.4. And so we really want to focus on those things that we get the most bang for our buck. When we did our Solution Tree training, our Learning Focused School training, we learned that ninety-one percent of exemplary schools, those schools where all children achieved at high levels, use writing to raise achievement. And our focus this year has really been on writing. Our first PD day was on writing. But these students are writing constantly. And this is an excerpt from the notes that we took that day. This is actually Melinda Glenn's notes, and we all keep a Google Doc, and so I just copied it right out of here.
Dr. Curry, will you clarify for the board you keep referencing when we did our training?
Yes.
Would you clarify that group, please?
Sure. That's the principals and the instructional facilitators and the leadership team at Central Office at our curriculum meetings. And we had somebody come in and do this training for us for about three hours, and we hope to have them come back. But he also shared with us the research that the students are writing because when you write, you can't think about anything else. You can be looking like you're paying attention, but if you're actually writing, you're not thinking about anything else. So one thing that he asked teachers to do, or he asked principals to ask teachers to do, is whatever he's done in the last ten minutes, I want you to write about. Because when kids can write about something, then that's evidence that they have conceptualized it because that is the hardest thing that a student can do. And one of the little mantras that I give to staff all the time is, when a child acquires language, and if you have young children or have had young children, you know that the very first thing they do is they start to form words. They try really hard. You see their little mouths working. But they're listening first, then they have to speak before they can read, and then they write. And that's just the natural progression. And so that's what we want kids to do when they're in a difficult content area, is listen, speak, then read and write. But they have to do all of those things to really conceptualize understanding. But writing is consistent and pervasive. It's consistent because it's in every lesson, and it's pervasive because it's all across the building. So there are opportunities to write in every content area, consistent and pervasive. So when we looked at, or when I looked at the three different types of research, I looked at those that really were high-yield strategies but centered around writing since we had already started with writing. And I compared Marzano's work to Hattie's work to learning-focused work. And what we can see are that there are some things in common. All three works have something called advanced organizers or concept mapping. And so that's something that we can say, if we do this well, we're going to raise student achievement. And if we do this consistently and pervasively, student achievement will come up. So this is just an example, and you do have the slide presentation and board docs. Confirmation bias. It's another one of those terms, but it's something that we have to be aware of because we have to be able to define these things. One of the examples of a high-yield instructional strategy is feedback. And I like to use this as an example because a teacher will say, "I provide feedback." And the principal will say, "Yeah, they're providing feedback, but I'm not sure it's quality feedback." And then someone else might come in and say, "Oh, they're really not providing the type of feedback that's required to get that growth." But if you're all talking about three different things and you don't know what feedback really looks like, then you're not going to get that high-yield result. So we have to really begin to define these instructional strategies. You can move on. And this is just some of the things that we can do. It's very, very small, but again, it's in your notes. One of the things is quick writing, summary note-taking. After ten minutes, have the kids write down what they've learned. You just summarize, quick note out the door, just a ticket out the door, a quick check to see if they got it. You can go on to the next slide. So what do we want to see in classrooms? We want to see evidence of the use of graphic organizers, and those are those concept maps, quick writes, shared written response, student writing samples, note-taking, not copying, but note-taking because it's a much higher level. You know you can sit there and you can copy anything off the board, but if you have to summarize it in your own words, then you're really learning at a high level. And then just avoiding confirmation bias. So this is where we're at, and this is where we're going. We have three more curriculum meetings this year. And the next one is this Friday at Stoney Point. We're really going to be digging into what those writing strategies look like so that we can avoid that confirmation bias. And so that principals and instructional facilitators and assistant principals, if they are able to come this year, will all have the shared understanding of what good writing practices look like in classrooms. At every one of the curriculum meetings, the school also does a presentation. And so the school will share something good and positive that they're doing. And we're also asking them this year to give us a PBIS update. Where are they with PBIS? And if you click on, I don't want you to click on it, Bill, because we don't have a lot of time today, but on that book, there is a link that is the agenda for the curriculum meeting. And so it's embedded in that book, and they can click on it, and we take all of our notes in there, and all of the presentations will be in there. If you click to the right, there is a walkthrough tool that we will use at the schools. If you'll go ahead and click on that one, Bill, because I think that one's interesting and worthy of sharing. This is an instructional walkthrough on some of the things that we've focused on. And I spent a day in one of our schools, and I won't say which one, but if you can scroll up, these are the questions that I asked as I went into classrooms. And this is a good baseline for that principal to have. So if you'll click on responses. I was actually in about thirty different classrooms or thirty different times, and one was unable to get this documentation in all of them because they might be doing things like taking a quiz or something like that. But if you'll scroll down, you can look, and you can see that in seventy-five percent of the classrooms in this particular school, there was not evidence of student collaboration. So in twenty-five percent of the classrooms, there was. If we know that listening and speaking and that kids should be doing at least as much as the teacher is important, then this is a good baseline because this principal can go in in another month after we've had this PD, do this again, and see if this number is increasing or coming up. So this is the walkthrough tool that will use pieces and parts of that so that we can compare data across time for these high-yield instructional strategies. Are students engaged in meaningful dialogue? And this gives a percentage of time. Go ahead. Scroll down. And let's see. Stay right up there, that listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And look at what we're doing there, what domains of literacy are apparent. In most cases, children are listening. Scroll up a little, Bill. I'm sorry, down a little. Are they speaking? Not yet. How can you begin to learn a new language or a content-specific language if you're not using those words? It takes people telling you that so many times, but you also have to use it just like a new language learner, an English language learner, somebody in chemistry, your new babies. They have to say those words, and you know they sometimes say things that sound really funny because they don't use that word appropriately. That's why they have to be speaking. So sharing this data is very powerful for staff members. Go ahead and scroll down again. This is the examples of writing. In this particular school, we had not done this PD yet, so this was a celebration that teachers are not even aware of this, yet some of the times, like forty-four percent of classrooms, note-taking was going on, and it was not copying. To me, that's a celebration, but it's also a very good baseline for this school because they have not had PD, and they'll be able to go back and do this, or all of the principals will go through and do these. So they'll have this boatload of data when the principals go through in another couple months, and they can compare where they were two months ago to where they are now with strategies that are research-based and these meta-analyses support. And we all know what they mean. Okay, can you go back? The one last thing that I want to tell you is next year, we will be doing twelve curriculum meetings. And that sounds like a lot, and I know principals do not want to be out of their building, but what we're doing is we're still only doing six, but we're giving them the option of two. So we'll cover the same content, like we might do one September twentieth and the next one September twenty-seventh, so they can choose the date that best suits them. But it also allows us to bring in assistant principals and teacher leaders and aspiring administrators so that when eventually we hire a new administrator, if we can hire from within, we're getting somebody hopefully that is up to speed on these. from within, we're getting somebody, hopefully, that is up to speed on these instructional strategies and how to utilize these tools. So that's the plan for, kind of in a nutshell, next year. We're going to work our way through these high-yield strategies, really putting the emphasis and focus on writing and the language characteristics. That's your curriculum update for the year. I tried to make it fast. Do you have any questions?
Dr. Curry, one thing I noticed, I don't know that it was uploaded. I don't have the attachment, so if we can send that to Deborah again.
Okay.
Click on what?
I haven't.
Oh, it's there. Oh, now it is. I clicked on it again. Thank you.
Any questions?
Wow. You know, my mother always said, "If you use the word, a word three times, then it's yours." So I understand the speaking part.
I think that's true.
They have to use the vocabulary and the concepts in order to own it. So that's very powerful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner for our superintendent's report.
Yes, and if you want to review this, it is attached, by the way. Wanted to let you know that the Education Foundation received a $1,000 anonymous donation in honor of Mr. Jack Hoag before the Christmas holidays. This money was given to the foundation to offer scholarships and grants to teachers. Applications from teachers will be accepted through February 15th of this year. The focus of the grant applications will be to increase literacy, in particular, writing opportunities, and to offer health and wellness opportunities to students and/or staff. The Education Foundation will award two $500 scholarships at the March Board of Education meeting. A heartfelt thank you is extended to this anonymous donor and to the Education Foundation for making these grants possible for our teachers. And just a little side note with that, I'm planning to email the principals tonight to make them aware that they can get the application on our website and to give them the deadline for those applications. The second thing I wanted to inform you of is that Rick French has forwarded a rezoning application to me, based on our conversation about the old Wittenberg School property. I wanted to make you aware that I have the application. If you want to move forward with a rezoning request, it has to be made to the county commissioners. The School Calendar Committee has been formed and plans to meet on Thursday, January 19th, to discuss calendar options for the 2017-18 school year. Teresa Smiggs will be facilitating the work with this committee, and she has already provided the group with three drafts for them to consider and discuss on January 19th. I have also given each of you a dinner invitation for you and a guest. This dinner invitation is for Thursday, January 19th. It is a belated Christmas gift and a thank you for your leadership in the school system. We celebrate School Board Appreciation Month during January, and this activity is part of that celebration as well. And on your invitation, it gives you an RSVP date, if you'll just let me know if you can attend. I'm very happy to announce the mobile units at Taylorsville have been sold on Gov. Deals. D. Watts is in the process of getting removal dates scheduled for the units and the awnings, but we are very excited that they're sold. And then lastly, we are going to be operating on a two-hour delay tomorrow for students and staff. I would like to publicly thank the staff members that worked this weekend to remove snow from parking lots and sidewalks. I would also like to commend our county's DOT employees for the job they do with snow removal on our highways. You don't realize how fortunate we are in Alexander County until you cross a county line after a snowstorm. And it takes a team to make this happen. We have a great one in this county, and I just want to give a shout out to those people and to say thank you.
All right, any questions? Okay, unfinished business. Sharon Mahaffey, we have, I think it looks like section 3,000 policy revisions that are on for a second reading.
Yes. The section 3,000 policies, first of all, I would like to remove one, 3620. We've become aware of a major revision. This was, this was a minor revision. We've become aware of a major revision, and before we bring that to you, we want to get some input. So remove that one. Also, student promotion and accountability. There were some changes made to that policy, and I thank Susan Gant and Teresa Smiggs for helping with that, because curriculum is not my area, so they were very helpful, and I appreciate that. But there were no questions or suggestions for the other policies, goals and objectives of the education program, technology responsible use, student risk of academic failure, testing and assessment, school improvement plans, and graduation requirements. And so I'd ask, like to ask for approval on the second reading for those.
Board members, you've heard the request. Do I have a motion to approve? There's, let's see, six policies printed in our agenda in the 3,000 section. Do I have a motion to approve those as they're presented? So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approval on the second reading of those 3,000 series policies, please say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. And there is another policy, 3565-8307, which is a Title I, the most item on our agenda.
Yes. The new policy from last month was Title I comparability of services. I did not receive any questions, comments, so I'd like to ask for approval on that on second reading.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor of approving policy 3565/8307, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries. Moving on to new business, you get to stay right there. We have on for a first reading the 4,000 series of policies, and that's quite a few. There's about 12 or so.
Yes, there are several policies here. The ones up for review with revisions are focus on students, staff, student relations, age requirements for initial entry, immunization and health requirements for school admission, domicile or residency requirements, homeless students, tuition for discretionary admissions, school assignment, concussion and head injury, weapons bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety, criminal behavior, attendance, attendance regulations and seizures, and student records. 12 of these policies have revisions to the laws that they go with. Policy 4100, age requirement for initial entry, 4110, immunization, 4120, residency requirements, 4150, student assignments, and 4700 have a phrase that was added to, or a section that was added to give special consideration to foster children. There are certain things that foster children do not have to meet before they are enrolled in school. Policy 4400, attendance, this was a, what I thought and the way the school board approached it, a policy and a procedure. So now, 4400 will be the attendance policy, and 4400R will be the implementation of that policy. 4125, homeless students, updates the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistant, makes that policy, updates that policy with the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistant Act, so that will now be concurrent. 4135, tuition for discretionary admission, these, this is tuition for students who are out of county that come to us. It clarifies the way that we establish the amount of money for out-of-district fees that those students pay, and gives the date of August 1st as the date to have that amount established. And then 4270, concussion and head injury, updates the policy with the State Board of Education policies. So we will bring those back next month for a second reading.
Great. Thank you. And item B is another new policy on for first reading, 4,003, translating policies for students and parents.
And this just simply says that, to the extent possible, considering finances and time spent to do it, that we will translate all materials to the language of our parents and students, if they do not, if English is not their major language.
We'll go ahead and bring that one back on in February, since that's on for a first And item C, Sharon, Ms. Mahaffey, we have the contracts that I think you were presenting between Alexander County Board of Education and Anderson Smith &amp; White PLLC for our annual audit.
Yes, Mike sent this audit the other day. This is the standard contract that's out on the state treasurer's website. This is for auditing the financial statements ending June 30th, 2017. The fee is the same as last year, which is always a good thing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I am going to need a motion to approve this, so.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions, Ms. Mahaffey? All those in favor of approval of the contract as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A good deal at the same price. We're good. Motion carries unanimously. And the last thing on the agenda is committee, sorry, I gotta, I need to not do that. The committee assignments for board members, I posted that in your board packet last week, based on comments and feedback I received from board members, so I have not heard anybody has any objection, so those committee assignments will be good for 2017. Anything from the board at this time? All right, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1186. Motion and a second. All those in favor of going into closed session, discuss personnel, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to go into closed session.